Good.
We ready?
I'd like to welcome you to the March 14th or 16th, 2022 city council meeting. Roll call. To my left, Councilmember Dave Fagan, Councilmember Jason Upchurch, Councilmember Heather Newsom, Councilmember Taylor Scott. Director of Community Service Directive Roger. You're in your wrong spot. City Attorney Chuck Zimmerman, City Clerk Treasurer Debbie Criggan. The reason Roger is sitting there, we have a vacancy in here. Ronnie took the promotion. Unfortunately, it's taking him to Texas. It's a move. So I would like to congratulate him on that and thank him for his years of service to the community and wish him well. That's why we have Roger sitting here. He's about the same size as Ron, but. So next is invocation. I'd like to ask you to stand. And tonight's invocation is Pastor Phil Hines. Do you have the floor, Pastor?
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come to you on this night of our regular meeting. We just ask that you'd give us wisdom and strength, each and every one. But Father, our hearts are with the Ukrainian people tonight. So far, seven, 2.7 million of them have left their country over the last several weeks. And then many of their men from 18 to 60 are dressed in battle uniform. Father, we just would ask that you would be with the Ukrainian people, be with those that are looking for a home. We ask that you'll help them find a place rapidly. We would pray for those that are there in battle. We ask that you'd give them wisdom and strength, protect them, Father. Father, we just ask that you would take that whole situation and circumstance and may it be done in such a way that the glory of the Lord comes out. And Father, we too remember our meeting tonight. We just ask your blessing and wisdom for every situation and circumstance. And Father, we'll just give you the praise and the honor and the glory and all these things in Jesus' name. And everyone said, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, in which it is law, with liberty, and justice.
Okay. Item four, approval of agenda. I would like to add an item, item 6E, under new business, change order Landmark Structures. Can I give a motion?
Motion to.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Second. We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Which one?
Okay, so now we need to have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item five, approval of February 16th, 2022, regular council meeting minutes and February 23rd, 2022, special meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Moving on to item six, letter A, recommendation of bid award North Dalton Well, number one, rehabilitation drilling project Carpenter Drilling LLC, total base bid price $212,989.43. Roger, would you like to work on that?
Yes, so this is continued efforts to try and get the North Dalton Number One well back into shape that will function as it's supposed to. Every about six years, we've been doing a freeze treatment on it to try and clear the screen. It's a problem it has, the well, we try to draw too much water through the screen and it clogs it up over time. This is bid, in the past, we've had a couple of different bidders participate from the local area. In this case, Fogle and H2O Weldering both did not participate in the process, so we received one rebid that's responsive from Carpenter Drilling. It is quite a bit more, I guess I shouldn't be shocked, but it's quite a bit more than what we anticipated starting in the game. And the challenge here is we thought about, well, we could delay this bid award, but we are right now, Els will receive a $350,000 grant from Block Rant to finish the well project this winter and spring. They funded, they basically make the funding available July 1st, has to be spent by June 30th the following year. If we push this back, we run the risk of not being able to take advantage of that $350,000 grant. So our recommendation is not to rebid it, but award this bid so that we can get it drilled, set in the ground there, and then when the grant comes forth, allow us to continue on through the next phase of it. Again, it's about roughly $65,000 more than we anticipated, but we do have those dollars in the improvement fund, albeit it stretches it, but yeah, we can say any questions on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the Deer Park Water Well Number One Rehabilitation Drilling Project, awarded to Carpenter Drilling LLC in the amount of $212,989.43 for the total base bid.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions by the council?
Don't see the prices going down, so spend the money sooner rather than later.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next, item B, notice of acceptance of work, Deer Park Airport, 2020 North, Apron Two and Taxi Lane Six. Daryl.
So this project was actually completed, the paving hearing was completed during the summer last year. They did the hydroseeding and the final painting in the fall. And as typical with a lot of contractors, they scatter when their season's over. We spent a lot of time contacting them to finish their paperwork. Finally, the spring of the year, they want to get their final payment, so they got their paperwork all correct, I think, assuming so. Debbie could verify that. And this is the final payment and acceptance of the project.
Make a motion to approve the notice of acceptance of work, Deer Park Airport, 2020 North Apron Two and Taxi Lane Six.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next up, item C, Task Order 2022-05, Water System Plan Update, JUB Engineers Incorporated. Roger.
So Department of Health requires us on a five-year cycle to update the comprehensive plan for the city of Deer Park. The plan is, is a guiding document as it relates to water, water rights, wellheads, water protection areas, all the water things we do, water safety things, consumer conference reports, all those kinds of things we have to do in the daily operations. And Department of Health makes us take this broad look every five to six years and update the comprehensive plan. There's lots and lots of tasks in here, all of which are what Department of Health requires. We already met with them, they gave us this big long checklist. In our case, several elements will be minor updates, but we have a new reservoir that's coming online, we have the new wells that come online since the last time, so there are some things that are involved in there. Anyway, this is the task order to get that done. We are supposed to have it done in this calendar year. You know, honestly, it's probably going to be next calendar year is the time we're finalizing, because once we get it drafted, then we give it to them, they have 90 days to comment on it. And so it'll add some time back and forth, but we're basically in compliance with the agreement we have with them to get our comp plan done. It'll give the guidance for the folks that replaced me down the line when I'm gone, as far as our system, what it takes, what's in there, and all those important pieces. So it's an important document. It's interesting, when I first came to work here in December of 91, the second day on the job, the engineer brought in our water comp plan for the first look at it, which I had nothing to do and didn't know anything about. And so it came up that way. So this way, I have some staff members will be involved with this, so when I'm gone, they'll have knowledge of what it is and what it says and the rules and the regulations. So anyway, we need your approval so we can continue on and have this documented.
Okay, motion to approve Task Order 2022-05, Water System Plan Update.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next up, item D, Task Order 2022-06, Brutus Lagoon Replacement, JUB Engineers Incorporated. Roger, you're up again.
I feel like we're just spending money like it's going on style. So this task order, in a little bit, you're going to have a public hearing, and there was a memo that kind of came along with this task order as well in regards to the sewer wastewater treatment lagoon, where we've been and where it's going. This is just the engineering work to finalize the dam safety, division of dam safety requirements relative to the lagoon, final inundation studies, some of the things we have to do once this new one's in place. It's also all the tasks involved with the construction phase inspection. It is going to be a two to three-year project to get it all done between the time it starts to the final dredging of the existing lagoon and getting the biosolids out, disposing of them. So it's a long period of time, it's a large number. Luckily, that number's going to be fixed as, whereas we don't know about the construction document here, the construction bids that they may come in. But, and it's a big project, so this is a task where we need your approval on. The one thing about it is because of sequencing in the meeting, we have a public hearing on acceptance of the loan and the task order, or the acceptance of the loan and acceptance of the resolution later. If you could make this motion contingent on your action on item 8A, that would be great. So if for some reason we didn't do that, then it wouldn't take effect. So that's the only thing I'd add to this motion.
Can I just make a suggestion? Can we just defer the motion? Because we really should have the public hearing first. My apologies, that should.
Could do that too. Get it slowed down.
No, just, I think just, that item's been introduced and it'll be brought up again at the end of the public hearing for action. So we'll do two actions after the.
We're talking about 6D.
6D, yeah.
6D.
And that works great too. So either way, we have to do it.
Next up, under new business, item eight, change order number one, Landmark Structures. You've all got your handouts here. Roger, would you?
Yeah, so this memo you have, so the first thing about it, this is a change order to the, to the water tank project, proposed change order to the water tank project. And basically where it comes from is what I've had a couple residents up in that area and wanted, at a planning commission meeting, talk about colors of the reservoir. Okay, so that's where this just came up. The, the water utility, when we put the plans and specs together, our vision was to paint it similar to the existing water reservoir on Cedar Road that's out in industrial area near the airport, didn't put a thought really there to the concept of an artistic look or a painting or a mural on this current tank that's being proposed. This new tank is obviously right in the residential area with more residential development happening around it. And so the question came up, what about the thought of doing something other than green with a white flow water? So, so the attachments in this memo, you have, of course, the first picture is the existing reservoir, okay? Out there by the airport, green tank, white writing, fully what we planned on doing. Then the change order amount, the change order amount is $77,968.21 for this, for this artwork. Okay? So it is a cost. And then the, the third, or the next picture back shows a kind of an artist picture of what we initially told them about a year ago, you know, what would it look like, what if? And then the company that, that gave Landmark the price is, these are some examples, the last page with the four pictures from his, from reservoirs in their repertoire. So imagine the tank on the right, this one has the pineapple on it, but that's what basically our tank would look like with a tree scape picture on the top of it. And then these other tanks kind of give you the ideas of what they can do. So the challenge is, it's not a fund, fundable thing necessarily from the water utility, and so I'm asking if you're interested in doing this.
I haven't, okay. The cost of updating, paint fades over time, especially when it's in the sun. How much is that going to cost every time it has to be done?
Well, the paint job on Crawford Reservoir was done in the late 90s. It's probably not that far from needing it again, however, we can engage that on what happens on the inside more, because that's where it's protected in the water than the outside. So, so in essence, this tank will have its regular coating materials on it, plus extra coating on it, and it may last longer. Okay? The green tank is, is chalking, you can kind of see that from the colors and so forth, which it was due over time. I don't think that would, you'd see that much in something like this. And so it may be a better product in the long run and lasts longer, but you know, to get 20 to 25 years is not unreasonable for the coating job.
I was just curious how much it's going to cost.
And what we're just, what we're talking about tonight is just the funding, not the ultimate design.
Correct, correct. That still has to be submitted to us. It would be something in this tree scape thing.
Pineapple.
Not the pineapple.
Request the pineapple.
Yeah.
I kind of looked like one at first, but I, it looks like the.
See, now you're just confusing D.
So it would be something in the, in the artwork they first gave us as a quick, this is something that we could do. It is being requested that it comes from the general fund if we do it, because it is something more along the artistic, the water utility doesn't need it to operate the tank. And that's, that's the bottom line. So the funds are there, are available. We would have to do a budget amendment later perhaps to move it around and transfer to the water utility and so forth. But it's one of those that I'm either way. I think, I get the concern potentially, people, the view of it, you know, so perhaps changing and making it look a little bit better is not a bad thing. And so anyway, that's, that's what's here for us. I'm more than happy to answer questions if I can.
We would need to paint it anyway, right?
Oh, yes, it's going to get.
So is this, like, what was the initial paint cost and how much more is this?
This is, this is $70,000 on top of the paint.
So that 77 is on top of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Basically, what would happen is instead of the green color, it would be a base coat color of, of say, a light blue or whatever.
Trees on top.
And then they'd bring the trees color in on top of that. I tried to.
That neighbor.
Well, and it's not easy, you know, it's up there at 100 feet and all equipment and so forth, and so, you know, you will see this tank.
I think one of the most memorable parts of a lot of small towns that I've driven through is actually what their water tower looks like.
Yeah, and if you go to this website, they have a full, long list of them where they've been doing it and so forth. And so it's not, I'm not saying it's not a bad idea, I'm just saying it's, it's a cost, you know, and so I just need everybody to be aware if they want to go that way.
I'm thinking I make a motion to approve Change Order Number One with Landmark.
Number One, Change Order Number One.
I thought that's what it said. Change Order Number One with Landmark Structures in the amount of $77,968.21 and to authorize a transfer of funds from the general fund to the Water Department Improvement Fund is requested and to write a mural on the Sixth Street Reservoir Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions by the council?
Is this time sensitive? Like, do we need to decide on it tonight?
I asked that question, and it's all about paint right now and ordering time periods for that.
The lead time.
And the lead time. Because what we have ultimately is, is if we're done with the project by the end of the summer, that's all phases of it, we're in line for a loan on our, or interested in a loan at 1.25%. If we miss that, then we're looking at a loan at 2.25%. So it's the interest point, and over time, it's about, you know, $350,000 more dollars to pay for that loan. So, you know, it's all about, it's, it's that kind of timing.
It's such a, this thing, I mean, as you put it up, it's freshly built up.
Yeah. I, personally, I like the idea. You know, one of the things that we've had comments in the count, you know, the audience and, is that we don't have a lot of attractive artistic kind of things. I'm in favor of it.
I mean, residentially, that's going to be way better to look at than D's favorite, the green painting with white writing.
I would, I would prefer to, I like the idea, I would prefer to do it as part of a bigger plan, because I think there have been lots of concerns about the roundabouts and different things that we need to work on unifying, but I understand the time crunch and ultimately I'm in, I'm in favor of it, so, yeah, I just, at some point. For all the things.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Start small.
Thank you.
Right?
Next up, item seven, public hearing. Item A, approving of the Water Quality Financial Assistant Agreement between the city and the Department of Ecology. So we close the council meeting and go to a public hearing. If the audience has any questions or concerns? Nope? Okay, we'll go back to the council meeting and close the public hearing. Item eight, resolutions. Item A, Resolution 2022-005, approving Water Quality Financial Assistant Agreement to loan to facilitate the new lagoon and pump station construction and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Roger?
Well, I prepared a kind of a long memo and it got a little wordy, but there's a lot to this whole thing, and it's been going on for quite some time. But we're really finally to the stage where we have to accept this resolution as part of the documentation that has to go to Ecology, and then that ultimately accepts the loan and we start down this path. You know, we've been fortunate that earlier, or last year, we dedicated some funds towards this, and I think that the punchline towards the back is we've got the, we have to accept a loan at 6.698, that's what we applied for, that's where we start at, and then we have a million, we have, let's see, I had this calculated here. We have about $2 million or a little bit over $2 million saved in the wastewater utility, both a combination of, of permit fees, connection fees, the $1.2 million for the funding through COVID that we did last year by resolution. And so we've been able to get this loan bought down from 6.698 to about 4.198. And you can see the amount of a person's rate per month that will go towards a loan payment. Because over time, the council's elected to do the 2% increase, which is about 80, 90 cents a year per account, we've got it up to where I'm pretty sure that we can make these payments with our current rates plus the inflation amounts we've been doing and not suffer any other consequences, especially having this two, a little over $2 million of our home money towards it. So we were able to do that. There's no indication that the connection fee funds and those kind of things are going to slow down this year either, and so we're still funneling, as we get those dollars that go into that improvement fund, we'll use those as best we can. I don't want to leave that fund empty when we're done with this project, because I'm not ever going to tell you that more of these projects aren't going to come along and need you, but that's kind of where at. I did bring a show and tell, because there's a lot of stuff that talks about what we're ultimately doing, and Jason saw this the other day. You know, when you're talking to memo about 15 mil thickness and 60 mil thickness or dual 60 mil thickness, it's hard to understand what that is. I mean, 15 mils is thicker visqueen, basically, okay? So this is a, this is a piece of the lagoon built in 1985 and from our storage cells, because two of them are built at the same time. So that's 15 mil thickness. When we, when the council elected to install that in 1985, it was done with a 40-year revenue bond that were due to pay off this year finally, that had a 15-year design life, okay? But probably that's what rates could be afforded to pay, and it took 40 years and it was adopted obviously as a revenue vote, and so that's what we've been paying on for the last 40 years. So that's 15 mil thickness, that was the engineering of the time to protect the groundwater. Now what we have is we have two, dual 60 mil lining, so that's these two pieces with a leak detection collection technology in the middle of it. So if the top one leaks, it goes to the next one, and then we collect these, this water and we pump it back into the lagoon, so we know if there's a leak going on. But that's what two 60 mil thicknesses are as compared to the other technologies. So this is what we have in cells number one, two, and three, this is what will be in the treatment lagoon. You know, huge leap in technology, huge leap in requirements and the rules, and thus a huge leap in cost. But that's what we're going to with this project, basically. That, that project is a new liner, a new cell, a whole new cell to the east of the crone, dual liner, new F1 pump station, and then we're losing a storage building down there that came with the property, so we have a new one of those going in as well. So it's a big project. The scariest thing about it is these numbers were put together not in the loan application, all that stuff, not accounting for what's going on right now in the whole bidding world. And so we accept the loan, we start the project, I can't tell you that we'll go through the bidding process, it may be one that they're too high and we have to pull back and say, okay, we got the loan, we got our money, now we got to come up with something else to do this thing. Or what we're hearing from some of the bidders is it's a big enough project that perhaps it will be able to be dealt with relative to some of the huge costs going on, except this is all, this is, this liner is all plastic, it's all, you know.
Petroleum.
So we'll see where that goes, you don't really know, but we did the loan several years ago, the whole process, you know, so it just takes time to get to this stage. So that's what this is, this resolution and this agreement is all about, and hopefully this memo wasn't too long-winded, but if there are any questions, I can answer from that.
Okay, where we are, we're at the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions by the council?
I have one question. This is pretty stiff.
Well, when it's a whole big, long sheet, it's not. It's just in those small little pieces like that.
I was just curious how high you could bend that.
Yeah.
Okay.
This lagoon would expand by, I forget, was it 100,000 or a million gallons or something like that?
Well, it's, it's a, not quite a million gallons bigger than the existing lagoon we have there now.
How many people would that allow us to, to service?
It still, as size, basically handle our current urban growth area population expansion, so, geez, without that pineback here, that's in the 7,000 range is what our, our portion of population based on our Growth Management Act process was several years ago. So we have, you know, it's not double what we have now, but it's a pretty good chunk still to go. In essence, what happens is as it gets fuller in time, then there's more pumping for pumps on both ends and so forth and so. And then how it's being built is the other lagoon that's there, we do have to remove the dike, portions of the dike on the west edge towards Dragon Creek, because we have to get it below dam safety's rules relative to a, a structure that could flood, inundate the country and so forth. So, but that dike will still be there in its footprint such that someday one could go back, add to the dike, re-line it, get it back in operation and use it as well. If we had them two there in series now, we don't have enough water to go through to keep the, the bugs active to be treating the water, so it's one or the other is what we got to have.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So did I hear you correctly in that the new lagoon will be set to handle a population of about 7,000?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can add pumps and other things to what's there to help that work better? Okay.
Yeah, and really what our city's limiting factor is, is not so much the lagoons, is it's the spray farm where we get rid of the water. That's ultimately going to be the Achilles' heel to what are. That's ultimately going to be the academy's heel to what we do.
Do we have a, do we have an estimated population size at which that becomes a problem?
No, I don't, I don't want to say a number there. I can't remember what that is. It was part of the reason why a few years ago, we did a study about reclaiming the water and actually putting another level of treatment at this, treat on the, at the storage lagoons to be able to add that water to the golf course irrigation.
Right.
And so that's probably the route to go. It, it's just, it's a big ticket cost, but it's probably the way to solve the lagoon watering problem.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item nine is a public hearing for the LID. Chuck, would you like to speak?
Just a second before we go to that, we need to go to item six.
Six C.
D. Six D. To approve the task order for J U B now that you approved the resolution to obtain the financing, then you would approve the J U B task order to do the work.
I move that we approve task order twenty twenty-two oh six.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments about the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Again, Chuck Zimmerman, legal counsel for the city, been representing the city for a while now. This is the opportunity for the public hearing for anyone who's here that's in the assessment role that is opposed to the way the assessment role was put together. This is to make that record in order for those people who are opposed to it to make a record, to be able to appeal the formation, the LID. So I would respectfully, if it's okay with you, Your Honor, I would declare the public hearing for that purpose open at this time and invite anyone here who's one of the owners of this S property or is otherwise affected by this LID project and the financing proposed in the LID's final assessment role to come forward and speak regarding the assessment role of particularly concerns over the way that it's set up. If you're fine with it, there's no reason to put that in the record, but if you're, you have concerns about it, then come forward. For purposes of the record for the minutes, we, no one is coming forward, so I would respectfully, if it's okay with you, Your Honor, I would like to close the public hearing officially on the public hearing for the final assessment role for LID number twenty nineteen dash oh one. And I wanted to make a couple of comments on this because I think it's important for the people that are, that are here. If you're wondering, you know, if you were not involved in the council, I mean, this is a, this is a very big project for the city. We did another one in twenty thirteen. We were involved in that one. We had the pleasure of doing the very same thing. The citizens of the city of Deer Park and those particular property owners from twenty thirteen and from twenty nineteen who are continuing to be property owners to this day should be applauded for stepping forward and having the vision to share in the risk associated with doing this project. In August of twenty nineteen, all of the property owners who were affected by this, every one of them, not, not six, six out of ten or twelve out of thirteen, that was all of them, all thirteen property owners came forward and signed and signed a commitment that they were willing to pay their fair share of one point two five million dollars. And that's, you know, when you're looking at a situation where there's land sitting there and there's nothing on it and you're basically thinking, okay, if we, it's a little bit of a field of dreams situation. If we build it, they will come. And I think that everybody surpassed themselves in fact because we have built it and we built the one in twenty thirteen and they did come and there has been development and we now have built this one and completed it. And we're hoping, you know, that they, that they will come, that, that we will get those jobs here for this industrial area with the all-surface road, with the water, the sewer, the sidewalks and all that infrastructure. You know, it costs money. The city was able to get grant to get a, get a curb loan. The curb loans reflected in the ordinance that we'll ask you to act on here in a few minutes. You know, we were able to get a favorable enough interest rate, you know, with interest rates the way that they were six months ago, you know, it might be that somebody could borrow money, you know, at or around the three point five percent that we're talking about. City has no concern if people want to pay off now, that's great. If they don't, they got twenty years to do it. What we're suggesting within the ordinance, and I'll just go ahead and continue on to the ordinance if it's all right, Your Honor, is that the ordinance, which is the next item on your agenda, which flows from this, the ordinance then puts in place this LID, but not for one point two five million dollars, instead for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, if I think I have my figures correctly, it's seventy percent of what we anticipated that it would cost. That doesn't mean we cut corners and we got, gave you less of a project, you just got a good project for less money. And so that means that it's, we had a similar thing happen in twenty thirteen, but not on this magnitude. It was much less of a change, but now it's, it's a fairly large, you know, reduction in what the, in what the people who stepped forward and said that they would pay, would be required to pay. And, you know, in terms of moving this forward, there, there are people who have waited to get this done so that they can develop. And, and so we would encourage you, I know we've telegraphed this every which way we can, and we had a very lengthy discussion about the value and the, the whole free reading process, but I would sincerely request that you, given that there's no property owners opposed to this, that you seriously consider waiving the free reading process this evening and pass this ordinance so that they can get moving with these projects because there is still an appeal period of ten days following the effective date of the ordinance and Debbie's going to have to send a formal notice out to everyone. And then the last thing I just want to say is, is that we, because the city wants to work with these property owners and, and, you know, give them time to evaluate three and a half percent over twenty years, we've given them until August one, I believe in the ordinance, we're only required to give them thirty days, but we give them till August one, just pay it in full and there's no interest at all. And so the city would be eating a little bit of interest on the curb loan, you've already made a payment on the curb loan. But, you know, it's, it's just, I think this is a good, a good community sharing, if you will, of how this project came together. So happy to answer any questions, but I did want to share that with you and I, this doesn't happen like this in every community. Just trust me, I represent a lot of them and you should be very proud of both these projects, particularly this one.
Do we need, do we need a separate motion to waive the free reading process?
Correct.
You do, yes.
Yes, I'm just going to make that motion to waive the free reading process.
One second.
Can we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. You can ask questions and we'll get to the.
Oh, okay.
So let's do that over. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved to waive the free reading.
Okay.
Now.
Motion to approve. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one zero zero seven, modifying, approving, and confirming the assessment and, the assessments and the assessment role of the LID number two one, two zero one nine four zero one.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Questions? Jason.
Just one. Has there any, ever been any objection at any point along the way in any of this? I, I don't remember one. I didn't know if you.
Questions, but never an objection. The, you know, and, and that's because we wouldn't be here right now if there were objections because the, the, and, and there are two people who are participants, the coils are here and they, you know, they've been with this from the beginning because they went through the twenty thirteen one, you know, and, and, you know, everybody's skeptical, but then you look at it and then you look at the success we had, this was a lot easier than that was, you know, because a lot of the same people are people that know one another. I know Knight was involved in, in both of them, so.
We also had an eighty percent grant too. That made a big difference.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That made a big difference.
No, that's, yeah, it, it, in, in a normal LID setting, if we went to these property owners and said, hey, you thirteen property owners, would you like to do a six point two million dollar project to improve the value of your property? Yeah, I'd like to. Will you give me the money? See, that's, you know, and, and that's not the way it is. It's, so they're paying a proportional share, not all of it, because we were able to get the grant and, and there, there's a lot of great successes within that project and I, you know, wouldn't you say was anybody opposed to it ever? No. Were there some hurdles during the project? Oh, yeah, you betcha. First off, they wanted to have us switch engineers. The engineers that were very familiar with the project, if we had to start over and go through a process of selecting different engineers, we would have lost probably a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars of value potentially. We were able to get through that. The next hurdle that we had is there were concerns over the zoning that we have out there, that they're bringing this up during the middle of the project. And we went through a whole rigmarole, nice, that's probably is maybe a rigmarole, roll in order to get ourselves through, you know, that issue. And we were successful and, and, you know, we just said, hey, how about if we just re-change the application so we can do industrial and commercial? And they ran it through, the EDA did, and, and we came back several weeks later with success. So, so we were able to do that too. So, so they were great partners on this too, you know, you know, say what you did well about the government and all that, you know, federal government, but, but the federal government, state government were, are big components within, within this project and I can't say enough about how a lot of communities want to do this, but not a lot of communities do this. So.
Good. Thank you.
You know, I gotta say too, we were extremely lucky. It was a timing thing more than anything else, but when, when Joe and Penny started working on the application, originally it was a fifty percent grant. That's what the first project was, that was what this was here, and that was still too much. And then lo and behold, we did some emergency management work a few years ago with the flooding we had and, and the soft roads out on Airport Road and Cedar Road, anyway, long story short, it qualified under a county disaster declaration and because of that one thing and the paperwork I had to do to get us through that process and get some free rock put on there by FEMA, Joe was able to turn that into an eighty percent grant project because of that disaster declaration. So a lot of things fell just right to make this thing happen. So we're extremely lucky in a lot of ways.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Another file cabinet.
Item eleven, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent.
You want me to read it?
If you do.
I would love to.
All right.
Approval of voucher claim checks numbers four hundred seventy-four through four oh one twelve in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred seventy, three fifty-seven and fifteen cents for the second half of February twenty twenty-two. Item B, approval of voucher claims check numbers forty-one one-three through forty-one four-seven, including E F T, devils in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents for the second half of March twenty twenty-two. Item C, approval of payroll checks number fourteen five thirteen through fourteen five forty-four, including P F M L nine forty-one taxes and health benefits in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents for the month of February twenty twenty-two. Item D, habitat for humanity, Spokane short plot request, twenty twenty-two dash one and twenty twenty-two dash two. Item E, surplus equipment, decoration sale, nineteen eighty-eight international S twenty-six hundred ten-yard dump truck, minimum bid twelve thousand dollars. And item F, Deer Park Airport lease agreement, lot fifteen C, David Brenson. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions about the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next up, item twelve is report of departments. Jake, are you on line?
I'm here.
Okay, you're up, you got the floor.
Yep. The estimate to keep rolling in for plan reviews, Hayden Holmes is taking off. I think once the road restrictions are lifted, we'll see them really live talk. That's the way I am.
Okay, thank you. So much for the speaker. Darren, you're up.
So we continue to work, I've been working with Joe and Penny on the EDA grant for the sewer main town airport. The application is just about ready to, to be turned in. We continue to work forward on the, on the engineering for the project. Other than that, we're doing spring cleanup and preparing the, the FAA washout grants for this year for pavement maintenance.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Would you like a couple minutes?
Just congratulate you on doing two successful EDA grants. This, and possibly a third, is that in my twenty-some years of doing economic development, I've never experienced EDA giving two grants to one community. So you're kind of unique. It's, but it was because you were well-prepared, you had the ideal project, you had people that were willing to step up to, to, to fund the, the match amount. You've got some great property owners out there that are, that are invested in, so, and hopefully it'll eventually turn into a whole bunch more new base industry jobs out there.
What can I say? Deer Park's the best.
Brad?
Spring's here, we're glad to see. We got, we're out sweeping streets. We have worked with Mother Nature on that, got a moisture to keep the dust down. We've got our guys in the shop right now getting all of our mowers, weed whackers, all that stuff ready for spring. So we're going to get started on the skate park here shortly. We're going to do some repair to it, hopefully have it open by the first of the month. And as Jake said, with the road restrictions, we have those on right now, so that's kind of a bummer for the builders, but we've got to protect our streets. So hopefully kind of open by the first of the month, maybe we'll have those pulled off.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
Well, the only thing I have, I've talked enough tonight, but I'm going to pass around after the last work session we had on Swinney Park. It sounded like there was maybe a little bit of confusion on what we've done relative to the, to the splash pad, past up down there, costs, et cetera, and so, and then where, where we are. Now, Tim, I didn't, I already gave you one of these, so you can pass it down. So anyway, it's a memo just for the next work session, nothing more than that. So when we have that, it just gives you a little bit of the high points on, on what's been done, the park splash pads, the costs of the operation of the pool side with just the pool employees and getting the pool to function, not our staff that are also put against that budget, just to give you some comparative numbers. And then also at the very end, there's a couple of funding scenarios in there. Oh, before that, there's a copy of the application that went to the RCO grant program that goes through the state of Washington. There was eighty-nine applicants, we ended up being forty-fourth, middle of the pack, and you'll say we didn't get funded. It's hard to really, to get into their wheelhouse to get a splash pad funded and even with the pedestrian pathway, et cetera. But then it has a cost estimate of, of a, of a splash pad when you go out to bid and do the project, it has the walkways that you had talked about relative up to the, from the handicap area up to the pool house, so it all tied it together. So there's some pictures in there to look at and then there's some funding scenarios, one of which is, is where our capacity for bonds, should you choose to go that way, either councilmatic or voting bonds. Of course, that's a whole different process, you'll have to get folks like DA Davidson or somebody like that in here to start talking to you about that if you want to go that way. And then there's also dollars where, where they would be available from our general reserve fund if, if you chose to do that. And there's a portion of the ordinance that talks about how those dollars are there and how they can be spent. So anyway, it's just the information packet for the next workshop that we would have on that project. Other than that, it's all good.
Item thirteen, council questions, comments, or reports. Dee, we'll start with you.
I have, I have nothing right here.
Jason?
I'm good.
Heather?
I'm good.
Kevin?
Just a report, yesterday at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, Superintendent Hanson gave a presentation on what the school district is expecting as far as capital improvements, future tax rates, future expansions of the school district. That was really helpful. It might be helpful to have him deliver a shorter presentation here sometime, just as we think big picture about taxes and how, how these things all fit together. But that was one where, yeah, just recognizing the, the amount of new homes, not just in the city, because he's looking at the larger school district, so he was identifying projects and developments I didn't know about outside the city limits. And that was, that was helpful to get a total number of expected homes, at least as of now. And that was, that was helpful to get a total number of expected homes, at least as of now, for the next five to 10 years and what that might look like. So his information, his stuff, we should probably be discussing. So if we want to break him in sometime, it'd be great. That was it.
Okay. On that, I gave you the how to fill the vacancy.
Yes.
We will have discussion on that in the first April meeting on how to deliver vacancy and how we will fill it. That's all I have. Item 14, interested citizens, oral communications requests and comments from the audience on unrelated agenda items. Mr. Schultz?
Working with Billy Costello, we're starting a drive online to collect things and send to people in Ukraine. We're working with the church in Spokane who's paying for the stuff to be shipped there. They're looking for clothing, kids' toys, coloring books, light stuff, diapers, flashlights, walkie talkies. Walkie talkies are the main thing they need right now. That's how they're staying in communication, letting people know where the Russians are coming and what's going on. That's how they're communicating. Also cash donations to cover the shipping. It costs them $40 to send a 70-pound box to Poland and then go into Ukraine. So cash, cash donations are accepted and the collection point will be at Billy Costello's State Farm office. What do you got in mind?
Yeah, just, just no canned food. It's really, they're heavy and it's hard to ship that stuff.
Yeah, MREs, they said.
But, yeah.
Yeah, cookie bars.
So I'd like to get you on this, everything that they're looking for, Tim, and if it can be put on the city website.
Yeah.
We'd appreciate it.
We can do that.
We have it due tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Peggy, how was your vacation?
Great. Can I talk a little bit about Brad as a private citizen on the light industrial, what our plans are?
Sure.
Okay. Um, Brad, this is my husband, Brad Coyle. I'm Peggy Coyle and we are property owners out there at that light industrial place. And it's been a long road, like you said, you know, but it's been wonderful because the people that have been working on it. Brad and I, of course, we bought the property over 20 years ago. He just says, 20 years? Oh, we 82 by the time we pay it off. I'm like, no, we started this 20 years ago when we're 40. So, you know, things take time in poli, in the political world. That's why I'm a private contractor. Anyways, so I've been a big pusher through chamber, through everything on this because I believe in it. We have a diamond in the rough. This, our talent is amazing with everything that we have, resources. We talk about the fights, the wars. It's all about resources, right? We have a golf course. We have an airport. We have this wonderful school district. So, and, but to cut a long story short, Brad and I are working on a conceptual drawings right now. We have 56 acres out there and we would like to, and are working on building a, an area for small businesses, manufacturing. The smallest that we can break down is one acre lots. So we will have between, you know, like 31 acre lots and nine acres, depending on who we attract to come on in. We'll start at the beginning of it. Like I say, right now, we're doing conceptual drawings. I've been doing a lot of studying on light industrial areas and I would really like to focus on eco-industrial areas. And that is what this property is going to be focused on. Eco-industrial, that is not only renewable resources. We will attack that and make sure that we use it so it's sustainable. That is what it's about, sustainability, using what you have the best way you can do it. Also about symbiotic business practices. In this park, I, the plan is to work with people, bring companies in that work together, that share resources, that maybe one company uses the waste of another company. Over in Seattle, Governor Enslie was over a year ago at a manufacturing place that takes composites that are excess and then they make them into, it's carbon fiber, and they take and make it into like park benches and all this other aspects. So it's about using what we have. I really, we were down in South for two months. We were so fortunate to be able to do that and a lot of dirt, but the desert scape, everywhere is water. There's no water down there and, you know, in Nevada, you only can water once a week. Arizona, they haven't done that yet, but they need to because Lake Mead is so low. Everything's so low. It's so horrible. And we've always had here these big swales with all this grass, you know, to take all the, weigh in water on. We're not getting that water like we were. So, and I've spoken with Roger in regards to the light manufacturing and the scape, you know, the yard scape. And I'd like to minimize that use of water. It'll be green, we'll have trees, but you're not going to have grass everywhere. Or if you do, depending on what we look into in the solar of using, you see, it's not really beneficial here, solar isn't in the inland northwest. We really don't get a lot. But if you use it together, whether you use it over top of, say, your grass of your drainage and it will stop with evaporation. So this is the whole plan going forward, sustainability. Let's work together. Let's get small businesses in small buildings that they're good family ran businesses that take together. My, my ultimate dream would be to have a daycare in this center, to have, you know, that type of aspect so that we can take care of the people as well. A trade school, work with the schools, get some trades in there. So we're going with it and once, now that you guys got that done, private people can get things done a lot faster. So I know we're gonna see things. We're gonna have to work it slowly because of the way everything's supply and demand is. It would be stupid for us to go and take out and just buy it all right now. We're getting quotes on materials and they're not even giving you a price until they're delivered. So, you know, we're gonna have to work smart, just like you guys are, but I think that you all did a great job in being behind this and we're gonna make stuff happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Richie?
So regarding Councilmember Shoals and his departure, my understanding is that the council would be appointing another council member and there's a timeline to do that and if it's not done with that timeline, then it's up to the county commissioners.
Correct.
Do you know what that timeline, I'm just going from my memory.
I'm thinking 90 days.
Yeah.
90 days.
Okay.
And then after that, you have 180 days and then the governor takes over, which we don't want.
No.
We'll, we'll discuss the procedure and we'll, we'll, as far as applications. Okay? Yep. Okay, item 15, executive session, we're gonna break from the council and pursuant to RWC 42.30.110 to discuss potential real estate sale minimum price. So we're gonna break for 20 minutes.
There won't be any action after the executive session whatsoever. So anybody that's gonna stick around to have him go adjourned, might want to consider it a few days late, but if you stick around, we'll give you notes.
How long do you say?
20 minutes.
That's okay. Sometimes.
We're back.
We waited. Woo-hoo. I'll cheer for you.
Item 16, German.
I'm not ready.
What'd you guys do with Chuck?
I'm in. Okay.